Okay, great. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the January 5th, 2021 meeting of the Select Board. Before we get started, I will read the public participation policy. The Hatfield Select Board welcomes everyone to its meetings and all other public meetings of the Town of Hatfield. All regular and special meetings of the boards and committees of the Town of Hatfield shall be open to the public and shall conform to the open-meeting law. Executive sessions are closed to the public and will be held only as prescribed by the statutes of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It is important to recognize that the open-meeting law affords the opportunity to listen to the proceedings, but not necessarily participate. During the meetings of the Select Board, an attempt will be made to find a balance between hearing from members of the community and conducting the required business of the Hatfield Select Board. Do we have any announcements? Do either of you have any announcements? I would just like to -- oh, sorry.
I just want to say Happy New Year, and I want to thank the 350th for the fireworks. I know you want to probably discuss that.
Yeah, I mean, the fireworks were so great. It was really just a great night, and the tour of Santa through town was really just something that was pulled together fairly quickly, was really nice, really fun. People absolutely loved it. And of course, the fireworks were great. A lot of people have reached out asking if we can make this an every-year occurrence, and nothing is impossible, I guess, so you never know. But I just really, again, want to thank the 350th Committee, as Ed did, and particularly Bobby Betzel, and KICKS 100.9, what they did, their involvement in getting it broadcast was really terrific. So, thank you, and of course, Happy New Year to everybody. It feels good to be on in a new year. Better things to come. So, did you want to add any announcements?
You guys both stole my thunder. Happy New Year, everybody, and thank you for the 350th Committee and the fireworks. It was a great display. And speaking of KICKS, and also to those that participated in speaking about Luminarium in Hatfield, one of which was you, Diana, Father Coon, and I know, and some others, I don't want to -- I'm sorry, I don't want to leave any -- Reverend Randy, I don't want to leave anybody out, so I --
Reverend Randy, Reverend Norrie, the new priest from the church.
Yep. But it was just a nice tribute, and the 350th Committee is able to sort of just kind of -- they can, what, spin on a dime? They can change direction, and just having to go with the flow, and doing a great job doing so. So, thank you to all the members and the townspeople that participated.
Yeah, that's true. We have had to sort of revamp things.
Yeah.
I think that we've been able to salvage quite a bit of, you know, what was supposed to be the celebration, and change things, and add some things, and, you know, we still have a little bit more celebrating to do.
Yeah.
It's going to carry over into this year, which isn't a bad thing. It's a great thing, actually, so we'll keep plugging along with that committee.
Can I just say something quickly?
Yes.
Just want to put it out there again, we have vacancies on various boards and committees, and Recreation, Conservation Commission, and, let's see, also, there's another board, Conservation, Recreation, and I know Community Preservation, but that's a representative. So, yeah, that's the representative from Recreation. But yes, definitely those --
Well, and if I may, we still have that Housing Committee that we've been trying to get off the ground --
Oh, yes.
-- that we still only have one member on.
That's correct.
And that's been going on two years now.
The Housing Committee, yes.
That Steph Slish is on.
Yes.
And that is -- this is the first time I'm hearing of the Housing Committee.
The Housing Committee was established out of the housing plan that was developed five years ago.
Yes, roughly. Yeah, and the committee is to look at the space, the open space, rental space, you know, there's got to be a percentage of housing that meets certain criteria, and this committee that we've been trying to kind of get moving is to look at that.
So, I'm actually kind of interested in that, because, you know, one of the things I think, and we have someone here for Community Forum, and I don't want to get too wordy here, but I'm really concerned about the fact that we're -- our school system is running out of kids, and part of it is because there isn't a big housing turnover in town. People stay here because it's great. We all want to live here probably forever, and so there isn't, you know, I think that we need to be building some houses in town, and that families can afford to move into. So, I guess, I would be interested in that, but --
The committee, I don't want to take anyone's time either, but that particular committee that is part of their charge is to look at housing, affordable housing, rental property, it's all-encompassing for the town.
Yeah, I think it's the biggest challenge we face, really and truly, in town. It's the biggest challenge we face.
Yeah, I would encourage anybody that may be interested. I think we're trying to get a committee of five, if I'm not mistaken, Marlene.
Yes, that is correct.
And we've got one.
Well, I would consider being on that.
So, people should reach out to maybe to Marlene.
And so who did you say is on it so far? Just Stephanie?
Stephanie Slish.
Just Stephanie Slish, yeah. Council on Aging is another board. Council on Aging has a vacancy. Anybody that's interested can contact me, or contact the Board of Committee Chair, and that person can let me know.
And I think as a reminder, are all these openings are online, or under the Town Pass?
Yes, they are.
So, if people, I know we just went through quite a few of them. If you want to look and see if there's something that piques your interest, please do so.
Yeah, great. Council on Aging is one we should make a priority, I think. So, we do have someone here in the room with us for Community Forum. We may have others online, but maybe we'll get to you first, Cindy, because you're here.
Thank you. Basically, I know that --
You can just sit.
You sure? Okay. Evaluations for employees are coming up, and so I wanted to come in before that happens. And I wanted to say how helpful that Building Inspector Kyle Scott has been, and Bob Wagner with the Planning Committee. About 12 of us abutters to a property on King Street, from King Street and Main Street, to file the formal complaint with them back on May 18th. I give it a lot of reasons. There was some blasting that was done without permit, and none of the abutters are notified, and at least two people ended up with cracked foundations, and no recourse and such, you know. That was a while ago, but there was two businesses that went in there without permitting or anything else, and we weren't getting any help with anything. And when we finally were directed to Mr. Scott and Mr. Wagner, they confirmed everything that there was no plans filed, no inspections done, or anything like that, and they took care of the situation. It really affected the quality of life for a lot of people in the area, as well as done damage to the property. And I just want, when their evaluations come up, I just want you to know that they went beyond, especially Mr. Scott, looking into all the legal ramifications and what needed to be done, and what was permitted on that property, what wasn't permitted on the property as far as zoning and everything else. So, when those are done, just so you know that they were very responsive, and did a lot of work, and we really appreciate it. And I do have a letter, but there's a few more people that want to sign it, you know, thanking him.
That's great. Always good to hear. I know I've had situations where Mr. Wagner's helped me out as well with regulations and things like that, and he's a very knowledgeable guy, so.
Like I said, most of it was earlier this year that they dealt with, but evaluations come up, and I just wanted you to know that before then.
Much appreciated.
Okay.
I'll look forward to the letter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We should maybe see if there's anyone on --
Is there anybody else that's interested in speaking during public forum? And so we have the Treasure Collector who is joining, here is Mr. Zagowski, Mr. Schrader, who owns the Chestnut Mountain Tree Farm, and our COVID Coordinator, Carrie Flaherty.
Those are the only three on there?
Those are the only --
We're not that interested tonight.
Only three.
Story of my life.
So, we have, quickly, we have two sets of minutes, and then we can get to the COVID update.
I make a motion to accept the minutes on July 9th, 2020, and November 17th, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, as is the case with all of our meetings, we have Carrie Flaherty, our COVID Coordinator, with us to give a COVID update.
Hi, everybody.
Should we turn it, or do you need --
I'm sorry.
Hi, Carrie.
How are you guys?
Good, thank you.
So, tonight, as of today, we are at 16 cases for the town, and only one of those will be coming off of quarantine shortly. The rest of them should be off of quarantine later in the week, and then a handful will be off the beginning of next. I seem to be averaging, in the last week or so, a case to three cases a day. Yesterday, Scott and I spent all morning calling people and doing contact tracing together, actually, because we had so many yesterday morning, so we were able to get through them I just want to take this time, if people, I mean, if we can get the word out there for people, that contact tracing is for the safety of everybody. It is not to make people feel uncomfortable that they have COVID, or that they got COVID, or whatever, but it really is a big deal, so I can't stress enough that when we call for people to please just take the 10 to 15 minutes it takes us to do the questioning and answer the questions to the best of their abilities, so that we can make sure that we know where you've been, that there's where the source possibly came from. It helps us to make sure that we inform people who have been in contact with you, if the patient themselves has not contacted those people, and also, you know, other businesses that you might have been at, et cetera. So, it's a lengthy process on mine and Scott's end, but when we don't get the questions answered, it makes it even more difficult, because we aren't doing our, I feel like we're in the end not doing our due diligence to make sure that everybody is informed like they're supposed to be, and contacted in case they've been exposed.
Could I interject something, Carrie?
Absolutely.
I just want to say that with COVID and everything that's been going on, the contact tracing is probably the most important part of this whole COVID, trying to nip it in the bud. That is where you can save people. That's where you can help people not get sick, and that's how you can, we can just protect ourselves. It really is, you know, the most important part of this, in my opinion.
It's the best tool we have to stop the spread.
Right.
Right? So, if I've been exposed, and I don't know I've been exposed, because there was no contact tracing, it wasn't notified, then I could potentially be giving it to other people, right? So.
Right, exactly. And so I've had, in the last few weeks, I've had some people who haven't returned phone calls at all, and we've made multiple attempts and messages left, and no messages were returned, and the phones weren't answered. And then I've had people flat-out say that they don't feel comfortable answering their questions, and hang up on us. So, I just, as much as I can, I understand people feel uncomfortable, but I want them to know that their information is confidential. We don't go repeating it. Nobody knows who has COVID in this town, except for me, unless those people go and tell people themselves. I mean, that has happened with a handful of our cases, that people themselves have informed the public, and that I have no control over, obviously.
Well, and that's their choice. I mean, they're, if they want to do that, yeah.
Absolutely, 100% their choice. But it doesn't come from, the information doesn't come from us directly. So, but anyway, so, we have, like I said, we have 16 cases, and hopefully, this is just the surge of the holidays, and that we're going to see our numbers go back down again. But we went a really long time with no cases at all, and then since just prior to Thanksgiving, or actually Halloween, obviously, was around the time that we had that big group of numbers, that we had 17 in 48 hours, or something like that. And then we went down again, and seemed to not have anybody for a week or two, and then we spiked back up again. So, hopefully, our trend is going to be going back to the way we had been. I mean, vaccines have started to become available to certain groups. We have our first-line responders in town that fall under the category, the current category for vaccination. It's been offered to everybody that it is supposed to be offered to, and we have a list of people who are wanting to get the vaccine, and so that's, we're waiting on that. I think that starts the 11th, so next week. That should start for those that are actually, had said yes, and we've got them all set up. And then obviously, as time goes on, and we start to have stuff available to townspeople, I can assure you that I will work with specifically Emma Dragon from Amherst, and also Meredith O'Leary from North Hampton. They, both communities are trying to do a regional vaccination when the time comes that they have the availability. They have the, they already have the storage units to be able to have the vaccines, so we've been in discussion in regards to that. So, when that information starts to become available, that it's open to the townspeople, or even when it starts to open up to our staff at the schools and stuff like that, because we're not yet there, we're not there yet, I'll make sure that people are informed, and anybody that's going to be able to get it at that time, that we get it for them, for the townspeople. I got to be honest, right now, we don't have any of that information. It's not, the general public is looking at anywhere from April to May at this point of getting vaccinated, so we still have a couple months before that's going to happen, just so people are aware.
Great.
Yeah, so everybody, don't let your guard down. We still have months to go. Just because we have the vaccines doesn't mean this is over. It's going to take until probably June or later to make sure that this country has a handle on this pandemic. So, you still have to abide by the mask, and you still keep your guard up, that's all.
Yep, so I can't, and that's a perfect way to put it, and like people, I get it. Everybody wants to be able to see their friends and families, and wants to do stuff, but gatherings need to not be happening, and wearing your masks are important, walking the streets in town, wearing your masks are important. I actually have to thank the police chief. He has actually addressed a handful of people in town where he's seen them walking around and walking around not wearing masks, or being in our stores and trying to attempt in getting into our stores without masks on, and he's addressed it directly himself, and educating people, and telling them like, this has to happen. Again, I've said it, we have the ability to find, I don't want to find, but if this is going to continue to be a problem, we're going to have to start doing that. We're 11 months almost into this. Everybody knows what the guidelines are, and what the state has been requiring, so I can't, we can't turn a blind eye if our numbers are going to keep turning, you know, climbing up because of stuff like that.
Okay, agreed. Great. Thank you, Carrie.
Yeah, so that's a, I don't really, I have a meeting tonight, just so you guys are aware, I have a meeting tonight with the school. I spoke with all three board members today for the Board of Health in regards to what the school's going to be, what our recommendation to the school is going to be tonight, and I'm not going to lie, it's been a hard discussion, so it'll be a little bit of a lengthy conversation tonight for the school committee meeting, and for the school board to make the right decision. But again, people, I hope, just realize that we're trying to do this for all the safety of everybody, as much as we know that it's important for the kids to get back in the building. We have to, we have to get back into that in a safe way. So, hopefully, that's going to be moving forward in the next couple of weeks, that we're going to get the kids back in the building, and not have to be doing the remote stuff anymore.
Okay, great. Ed, did you have any more questions for Carrie?
No, I mean, we've suffered a year, a couple more months is well worth trying to get this under control, so, you know, we just have to do what we have to do to protect the town, and I thank Carrie for all her effort and work, and Brian, and the committee, and, I mean, like I've said, it takes a COVID team to protect the town, so, I mean, it's been a long process, a lot of people involved, and so much effort on everybody's part. I can't say thank you enough to everyone that's been involved with us.
Yeah, Carrie's been really good about keeping us very informed.
Yep.
Did you have anything else?
I was just going to thank Carrie and Scott, and I know the contact, I'm just going to say it again. The contact tracing is just so important. People need to realize that. You know, I think it was Liz at our last meeting just said, you know, it's not like your typhoid Mary. If somebody, if you're determined to have COVID, please let Carrie or Scott know who you've been in contact with, because you're helping them, and those people now can help whoever they've been. I mean, it, you know, it's a snowball.
There's no shame in it.
There is no shame in it. It's an illness.
Absolutely, any person here could catch COVID.
Right.
And --
And as far as the schools, Carrie, I would say, and it's like us with Town Hall, we'd rather err on the side of caution, to Ed's point also, for a couple more weeks or months, let's just, let's just get over the hump. You know, we, we need to try to get on the other side of this, and if by staying closed, or reducing hours, or going hybrid, whatever the decisions are, we, as the officials, right, the public elected officials, need to make those determinations based on the science, which is where you, and the Board of Health, and Scott, and others come in. So, I just, we can't let our guard down, as Selectman Jaworski said. We just need to, you know.
I did bring up tonight, just for those that didn't see any of our notifications about it, we did obviously less than the hours of the Town Hall being open.
Right.
So, Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:00 AM to 1:00. You obviously can still contact the offices by phone or email, and make other arrangements that they maybe could meet you at the door if you really needed to be coming here specifically for a reason outside of those hours.
But the doors will be locked. The doors will be locked, and nobody's getting in.
The doors are locked, absolutely. The doors are locked, but, I mean, if somebody, if somebody has a big bill to pay, or something like that, that you can't be dropping that kind of stuff, but you can't make it during the hours. I know, like, in the Treasurer's Office, they would make other arrangements for you to do it safely, not to be in the building, but they could take your payment at the door kind of thing, if it had to happen, or any other office for that matter, if it was something specific that you can't come during the normal hours, just contact them and make other arrangements, unless it can wait the next two weeks that we could get through this timeframe, and then hopefully, we'll be going back to the normal business hours again, and this won't last long for being cut back. But we had to make that decision last week, because the numbers just kept climbing, and I just didn't feel it was safe for our employees to be having so much public interaction.
Agreed.
I think lots of people are doing things by the drop box, and doing less in-the-building work on a day-to-day basis, since we have been open. I've been here in the Board of Health Office doing work myself, and the foot traffic definitely seems much less than it used to be, but that doesn't mean that I want to keep the building open and accessible, so that we take the risk of lots of people being in the building at one time when numbers are high. So, that's why we did that change, or that I suggested you did the hour change.
Right. I mean, we take the, you know, protection of our employees' health very seriously.
Absolutely.
And we balance that with wanting to provide as convenient services as possible to residents, so hopefully, this will be pretty temporary.
Right. All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Carrie.
So, next, we have a number of resignations that we've received. Very sad to acknowledge some of these, so.
Some long-term appointments here.
Yes, so first is Buster Samansky has retired as our Electrical Inspector, and he has been doing that for 41 years, so, and I had the pleasure of working with Buster in that capacity back when I worked for the town, and, you know, he's just a great guy, and he's been a really great public servant, and we really, really thank him from the bottom of our hearts for all those years of service, and wish him well in retirement. Did you want to add anything?
I'd like to point out, I mean, last year, David Wizik retired, so for years, it was David Wizik and Buster that were our inspectors, and we're losing, that was like almost 100 years of experience right there between those two guys, with everything they donated to this town. So, I want to thank Buster for, he was exceptional, he was a great Electrical Inspector, and also David were both outstanding, so that's all I just want to say on that.
No, I, you guys go first all the time, so I echo both of your sentiments.
Do you want to go first on the next one?
Yes.
Okay.
Whatever you want.
So, could I have a motion to accept the resignation?
Do separately? Oh, sure. So, I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Electrical Inspector Stanley Samansky, aka Buster.
And I'll second that, with regret, and I know we're going to send him a nice letter, and.
Yes, and I would add deep gratitude to that. So, motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, we also received the resignation of Lieutenant Tim Pachorick. Did you want to speak to that, since I've been stealing your thunder on it?
I know that, yeah. So, actually, I would like to say that, speak to that. So, I'd like to thank Tim, who was probably one of the first people when we moved to Hatfield 20 years ago, that we, our family actually got to know. It was more because of his being an electrician than it was a police officer. I should clarify that, right up front. But getting to know Tim through the years, in his different professional capacities, whether it was as a police officer, as an electrician, as a DJ, as a restaurant owner, and everything else that I probably don't even know about, he's been a great, he's been a great guy to get to know. His companies have always been good, and he's always been professional regardless of what hat he's wearing at the time. So, in reading his resignation letter, Tim's been doing this a long time, and --
20 years.
Yeah, his expertise and his personality will be missed. So, I would just like to thank Tim for everything he's done on behalf of the town in various capacities, but since we're talking about the police officer resignation, I'd like to thank him for all he's done for the town, as one of Hatfield's, if not the, longest-standing police officer at this point, probably, right?
Oh, yeah, I'm sure. And I would just add that, you know, he was our lieutenant, badge number two. The letter that he wrote is really, really nicely written, really beautifully written, and I'm really, I'm sad to see Tim retire, both, you know, because he's Tim, and he's really just been an asset to the department, but he was the last town resident officer that we had. And, you know, I know how important it can be, you know, during, maybe in a time of crisis, or an emergency, or something like that, to have response from someone you know. And that's true of our EMTs and our fire department, too. And so, I'm sad that we have no town resident officers. So, I just wanted to add that. So, a huge thank you to Tim for everything.
Yes, huge thank you to him. We're losing him on one end, but on the other end, we're sort of picking him up.
We'll get to that.
But it's tough when you're working, and you got a full-time job, and you got a business, and you're also, you know, volunteer as a police officer.
And a dad, and, yeah.
And these days, it's even tougher, and with COVID-19, it's even more tougher, so, I mean, anybody that works in these capacities, you just got to give them a lot of credit and thank them for their service to the town, and 20 years is still a long time, so I do want to thank them and appreciate everything that he's done, so.
So, we'll need a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept, with regret, the resignation of Tim Pachorick as Police Officer down in Hatfield.
I'll second that motion.
I would just note that he's a lieutenant in that motion. Okay, a motion made and second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We have one last resignation, and another one that I'm really sad to receive, and that is Jill Tucker resigning as a member of the Council on Aging. Jill's been on for a number of years, and she's really dedicated to the seniors here in town, and has really great experience in her professional life that's made her a great COA member, so I'm really, really sad to see this as well. We'll let you go next, if you want to say anything.
Again, well, you took most of it. Now, I agree, you know, Jill and the other members of the COA Board of Directors, you know, they all have that special connection, I guess, and Jill certainly had that connection, and we often spoke outside of Town Hall, if we run into each other, and the passion was always there, and her want for the seniors to always get the best opportunities and best exposure to various things. So, I do, would like to thank Jill for her years of service on the COA.
I also want to thank Jill. I know she's been exceptional on the Council of Aging, and she's put in a lot of time and effort to help the seniors of our town, and she'll be sadly missed. Sorry to see all these people retiring. I mean, there's a couple, a lot of experience here, but hopefully, others will step forward in town and take their turn stepping forward, volunteering, and so if you have an opportunity for Council of Aging, or you want to get on the police department, or whatever, you know, let the town know, do, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, again, she was, like I said, really qualified, and I felt like she was really uniquely in tune with, you know, the needs and issues that some of our seniors were facing, so I'll need a motion.
I'll make the motion to accept Jill Tucker's resignation. I'll make the motion to accept Jill Tucker's resignation with regret from the COA Board of Directors.
I'll second that.
Motion made and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I didn't ask if there was further discussion, but I assume we were done. So we're going to just change gears now and go right into appointments, and look whose name pops up. So it has been recommended by Kyle Scott, our building commissioner, that we appoint Timmy Pachorick as the electrical inspector. We all know Tim has great experience in this field, a very qualified electrician. And so I think that's a great addition, and we'll keep Tim busy.
Former police officer Tim Pachorick, is that who we're talking about?
Former lieutenant.
Still enforcing something.
Yeah, right.
I'll make the motion to appoint Tim Pachorick as the electrical inspector for the town of Hatfield.
And I'll second that.
Motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Kyle further recommends a gentleman by the name of Craig Neal of 61 West Street to be the assistant or alternate electrical inspector. He said that he's come highly recommended by other inspectors and is qualified for the position.
I'll make a recommendation to appoint Greg Neal and to alternate electrical inspector, and I want to say thank you for stepping up and taking on that position.
I'll second that.
Motion made and second, any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, and thanks to Kyle for moving quickly on that. So next, we have, on the agenda is Chestnut Mountain Tree Farm, and this is a proposal to replace a well under the terms of the conservation restriction, and this is up at the Christmas Tree Farm, correct?
Yes, it is.
And I believe that Mr. Schrader is joining us.
Mr. Schrader, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Welcome. Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, thank you.
Marlene, did you want to discuss this, or did you want to?
Well, so Mr. Schrader has been in communication with an engineer reviewing his proposal, and he also had reached out to the Department of Conservation and Restriction as they are also a holder of this conservation restriction. They have reviewed it, they had some questions that were presented or in response to Mr. Schrader's proposal, and Mr. Schrader has provided them with the information. And DCR is satisfied with his proposal and have reviewed the conservation restriction and under the improvements clause of the CR that it is his proposed work to install a well for irrigation is accepted. And so they want to make sure that the town of Hatfield is in agreement or approves the same thing.
Accepted, not accepted.
Accept, accepted.
A-C-E-D, yeah, okay.
Not accepted.
Not accepted. I just want to make sure people at home know that.
Yes.
Okay, yeah, it says that it doesn't even, he doesn't need to submit a formal written request or anything like that.
They're looking for a verbal response from the town of Hatfield.
I mean, I have no problem with it whatsoever, but I don't know.
I had a conversation with Ed, and the Conservation Commission is also a body that signs that conservation restriction, and they did at the time that was approved. And I have forwarded the information to the Conservation Commission. They will take it up for review, they're meeting later this month.
Oh, so it has to go through them?
Well, it doesn't have to, not that I'm aware of. But I did notify DCR and Mr. Schrader that, you know, a member of the Board of Selectmen had inquired about the Conservation Commission just, you know, taking a look at it and getting, you know, a notification of it. So I did that earlier today.
I mean.
I mean, I guess, if it's not, why are we holding it up if it's not necessary under the conservation restriction?
No, no, what I was saying was just as a courtesy to the Conservation Commission, because this has a restriction, they should be kept in the loop, that's all. I know that they don't have to get another.
But if they do, no, it shouldn't, and I will pass along this board's information to DCR. And when the Conservation Commission meets, if there's any comments, I will forward those on to DCR.
Understood, but we're aware that there's been delays with the Conservation Commission meeting, and I don't want there to be any necessary delays to do something that's not required by DCR, is my point.
So, if I may, so I appreciate the information we were provided. And in going through the packet, I see that Bob has also given kind of a long, a short-term and a long-term forecast of the plans for the property in general. To Ed's point, I think we should keep the Conservation Commission just in the loop. So I guess, Bob, the only question I would ask you is, when would you begin work on this? And I'll tell you the reason I'm asking is if the Conservation Commission isn't meeting for, I don't know when they're meeting next.
They'll be in two weeks.
In two weeks. We, to Diana's point, we don't want to hold you up, but I think we do want to just let the Conservation Commission know. So if we, I don't know, would we delay an approval or would we approve it and just, Madam Chair, would we approve it and just say, we're just letting the Conservation Commission know about this? I mean.
I mean, there's.
I don't want to hold Bob up.
We don't have to approve it, do we?
But if not, right.
Just verbally?
Kind of a, right.
It's a courtesy because the town is the holder of the conservation restriction.
I guess I see what both of you are saying. I'm just a little concerned. We know that the Conservation Commission has had problems with reaching quorum and moving things along, and I just don't want unnecessary delays for a step that we don't have to take. I mean, I think it's great to take it as long as the Conservation Commission doesn't drag their feet.
Yeah, which was part of, so my question to Mr. Schrader would be, it's not that we're holding it up, but I mean, was anything going to actually take place in the next couple of weeks to break ground type thing? Or is that not till spring?
Well, I haven't, you know, I haven't taken any steps since meeting with NRCS back in October, and then subsequently with the staff person Sasha from DCR in November, you know, pending their review and confirmation that we can move forward with this under terms of the CR. The NRCS engineer has provided me with a protocol I would need to follow in terms of having a well-drilling firm come in and take some test cores to determine that there would be adequate yield for a well. I haven't taken any of those steps. That would be the next step. And my goal would be to have this up and running by June of this year. We had significant losses last year with the drought, which sort of crowded my son and I to move forward with this. I don't, I don't actually know how long it would take to take both the steps of the core samples and then actually installing the well. If I was to be delayed, you know, a month or more, I would think that would throw a little monkey wrench into the plans for this year.
Okay, I think you've answered my question, thank you. So I would say that while we don't need a motion, we appreciate the heads-up. It doesn't really need approval, per se, or doesn't need approval from the Board of Selectmen because it meets the CR guidelines, the Conservation Commission guidelines, so.
You just verbal approval, so just, there's no formal vote?
No.
Just like a consensus?
If the board is, yes, a consensus, if you don't have any concerns, questions, and.
I have none, so I'd like to see the project move forward.
Move forward, yeah.
Yeah, I have no, I mean, and it's fine if we want to notify Conservation.
Yeah.
Maybe we could be in touch with them and let them know that this is something timely, and we would hope their meeting is actually executed in a couple of weeks.
So the information was forwarded to the Conservation Commission Chair today, and Mr. Hennessy, and he confirmed receipt and said he would be glad to share the information with the Conservation Commission at their next meeting.
And if their meeting doesn't happen?
Well, if their meeting doesn't happen, as Mr. Schrader said.
Again, all I'm saying is, we don't need them to take any action.
I mean, they don't have to approve it, so there's no.
All I'm saying is, let's just provide the information. I mean, when they meet, they meet. They're not required as far as DCR, just out of courtesy.
Sharing the information with them.
Here's what's happening.
Mr. Hennessy can send them all an email, who's on the committee, and then whether they meet about it or not doesn't really matter, because it's, you know what I mean? It doesn't need a meeting for the information to be shared, so.
Great. Okay.
So we need.
Mr. Schrader, thank you. What, we don't need a vote?
We're on board. No, no.
So I understand that the Select Board is going to respond to DCR that there's not reservations with their moving forward and approving the well?
None from me.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, did I?
No, no, I thought we were all sort of just going to give a little consensual yay or nay.
Well, she said we don't need a vote, so, okay.
No, there's no, I'm not hearing any objection. I'm not hearing any objection.
Correct, right. We're all saying the same thing, it goes differently.
Okay, next, we have administrator items.
Quickly.
Money, money, money.
Financial update, and tax bills were mailed out, and Sharon is also joining the meeting. So at any time, Sharon, you'd like to speak?
Excuse me.
Just go right ahead. So the tax bills were sent out last Monday, correct, Sharon?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Hello? Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Yep, they actually went out last Monday. We held off till after Christmas, but they are out, and people are already paying, so I appreciate that. So those are in the mail, and they'll be due on February 1st.
Thank you, that's correct. The accountant has reconciled fiscal year '21 through November, and actually, the accountant will be here this Thursday, visiting with us, and so we'll be meeting with her, and we have a number of things to review. But anyway, she is on target and very pleased and continuing to plug along.
That's great to hear, thank you.
You're welcome. CARES funding update, so the previous meeting, I believe, I had presented a spreadsheet of the costs that the town has incurred, the town and the school. And we had submitted a round two application for funding. And so for round two, we received $155,148 in total with the money that we had received earlier, round one. It's $177,382. So they're also taking, the state is taking into consideration the costs that we submit, that many of them qualify for FEMA reimbursement. But FEMA is not, my understanding, and I had a conversation with the fire chief, FEMA is not processing anymore expenditures. They have closed out their phase. And that was, and his understanding, again, from a representative he spoke to, was that it was for, pretty much for emergency response, not related to other towns or school expenses that were incurred. So I'll be reviewing that. There is an extension, and I'm going to submit costs for the COVID coordinators for payroll purposes, and hopefully, that should get covered. But it's not guaranteed that all of it will be covered. So we will be having a discussion with the Finance Committee to look at costs that, you know, we're not able to cover either through our operating budget.
Well, we can't predict how long we're going to need that provision either.
And this still continues, this pandemic, so.
I would also, if I may, I would also add that, in our opinion, as the town administrator and Chief Flaherty, as the Emergency Management Director, and Carrie, and everybody who has submitted anything through CARES Act for reimbursement, did so because we were reading on the guidelines that these things should be covered.
That is correct.
So I'm rather disappointed.
Me, too.
That we will need to talk with the Finance Committee because those bills still need to be paid.
That's right.
I'm just a little disappointed in our state and federal government that what we were told would or should be covered, we're getting told or we're being, we're finding that it's not.
Right.
So I don't know if we have any recourse. And by recourse, I mean in the sense of resubmissions or something. Or if FEMA and the state need to get their acts together as to who's actually going to reimburse the funds, we don't really care who's giving us the money, but we want it. Because this is a pretty big difference between what we were told we would have at our disposal and what actually is being reimbursed.
So it's a big, big difference.
Right.
It's a big difference. I mean, we can say it's roughly $80,000.
Yeah, $289,000 had been allocated to Hatfield. So we still have money available, but my understanding is you have $289,000 available. If the costs that you submit, or expenses you submit, are eligible, and every single one of them were accepted.
We weren't pulling any fast ones, we were.
But the state is saying that, you know, 25% should be coming from FEMA. The fire chief and I have had conversations, and there have been mixed messages from.
Have you, so have you called Senator Comerford's office?
No, I have not done that. What I did was, if you have questions, you can submit an inquiry online. I did that, I received a response. It didn't answer my questions, really. So I can reach out to Senator Comerford.
But I, so, so to your earlier point, I think, Marlene, so if we thought, if we were told we had $289, we're actually showing we've used, we were approved for $177 at this point.
The town has received a total of $177.
But basically, and we're told that's all you're going to get.
Right now, based on what we've submitted, yeah.
So theoretically, or not theoretically, I guess mathematically, there's still $112,000 that we could spend under CARES Act.
That's correct.
And so that, okay, so that's going to be our plan because it's been extended. That's where the COVID, anything COVID-related, but, okay, I got it.
And, you know, the federal government is not putting forward any additional relief funds for states and municipalities at this point. Great.
Well, thanks for the update.
So it was a disappointment, yeah.
I do want to point out, under the financial update, the words reconciliation is music to my ears. That's why I just want to point that out.
It is, it is music to my ears.
Amen to that.
Moving on, just a Mass Works grant update. Of course, you know, we.
Marlene?
Yes.
I don't know if this fits in that or not, but I thought it kind of fit under the CARES is that the other part of the conversation is about the Family First Corona Relief Act, and that, again, there has been no extension from that from the government at this point. So I'm going to put together an email for the Selectmen to have a conversation about whether, as a town, we want to extend some kind of benefit to our employees because a fair amount of them are still may have the potential to need to quarantine and the such. So something to keep on the radar. I was hoping that, you know, something would come across the plates already so that we could just follow suit with what everyone else is doing. But I have an email out to a couple other towns to see how they're handling it. And at this point, it's kind of 50/50, my response. Some are just saying people have to use their sick and vacation, their personal time, not vacation, sick and personal time, and others are saying, no, we're going to extend out the extension for Family First.
Okay. I'll watch for that email.
Just have it on your radar.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Sharon.
We have processed $297,900 in expenses, engineering and pre-construction costs, and I have submitted reimbursement for that amount. We have received, and that does include a request that I just submitted for an additional reimbursement, so we haven't received all that yet.
That's on the Mass Works.
That's on the Mass Works grant. And I have to say, they've been phenomenal. I mean, it's usually a two-week term. I mean, it's usually a two-week turnaround. I submit it, and two weeks later, treasurer's notifying me that, you know, she's received the payment, so that's good.
So as a reminder to people, this was the $2 million Mass Works grant.
$2 million Mass Works grant for the water and sewer project on Route 5.
That's great. I'm glad they're so quick to respond and to reimburse. That's important.
Fantastic.
And so the pre-construction stuff has started, but now the project will pretty much go on hold until spring.
Right. So we had the pre-construction meeting, and then they did some, put some time in for mobilization.
Right.
And then they will, yeah, pick up in the spring. Let's see, FY '22 Capital Planning, Capital Planning Committee has scheduled meetings for January 11th, 20th, and February 1st. Typically, they like to have their meetings done by the end of January. There was a little bit of a delay with, you know, with the holidays. So there haven't been too many projects submitted to capital planning, and that reminds me, I wanted to have a conversation with the Board of Selectmen about any projects that, I know we've talked about a Phase 3, but I don't think we're really ready or prepared to submit something to capital planning for Phase 3. I mean, it's not too late. We can still work on putting something.
Let's give Ed a little bit of a break.
Actually, under capital planning, one thing that we should be considering is the furnace and the heating system. That's one of the last things that has not been updated, so I don't know if that could be discussed under capital planning, or get some idea from Phil, because I know Phil has gotten some prices. And the way I'm looking at this, under capital planning, is maybe we had the money for downstairs, and I think there was a lot of savings from the funds that were left. Maybe some of that money could go towards possibly a new furnace or a new heating system. I mean, that's just talking out of the box, so just some future ideas, because I know there's some issues with the steam. It's an old steam system still, so maybe that's one of the last steps for, we've done so much work in Town Hall protecting it. I mean, it's, the heating system's like the heart. If you don't take care of the heart, then the building dies.
I mean, that would be something we should maybe mention to Phil, and Phil would put forward for this year.
Or at least get it on the list, you know, how we have the long-term.
The plan, yeah.
Yeah. Thanks, Ed.
And I'm the capital plan person again.
Yes, you are.
From the Board of Selectmen.
You're welcome.
Yeah. So, yeah, we are, you know, kicking off the.
Here we go.
Still in the, we're still, yeah, kicking off the new year with capital planning, and communication regarding the FY '22 budget has been sent out to all the boards, committees, and departments. January 29th is when budgets are due, and I also had sent out a list of events with deadlines, due dates, you know, on that list, or the meetings the Board of Selectmen and Finance Committee will be having, so here we go again.
Here we go, right in the pipeline, but that's all right.
Marlene, when, so this was sent out in December, I mean, to all the departments and all the.
It was sent out last Thursday.
So maybe in another week or so? I mean, like a reminder to, you know, just, not to us, but to the department heads.
Department heads and boards and committees, yeah.
Yeah.
And we've already received something.
Yeah.
So that is, that concludes my items.
Do you have anything else?
No, I do not.
Negative. All set.
I'm all set.
Then I'll make a motion to return.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye. Yeah, thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Marlene.
You're welcome.